Good morning, everyone. We'll call the April 3rd, 2012 meeting of the Jackson City Council to order and ask Councilman Johnny Dodd to lead us in our invocation and pledge. If you would, please rise.
I'd like to ask Mr. Rocky Miller, Elder Rocky Miller, from New Life to come up, please. Lead us in the prayer.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Keneeta, I think you can show all council members present. Council Adam Thor has received a copy of the minutes of the March 8th, no, March 6th, 2012 meeting. And if there are no additions, any corrections, if there's no objection, we'll go ahead and accept those minutes as submitted. I will indicate to the audience that if you have any comments under new business, if you would let us know, I'll be happy to call on you for those comments, okay? We have two proclamations this morning, and I'll go down and get those underway.
(inaudible) 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 Sing a song. (laughing) No, 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 don't sing a song.
Okay, Mark, thank you for being here. This is a proclamation. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has public health implications for every community member in the city of Jackson and county of Madison. And whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our communities is seen by statistics indicating that one in five women will have experienced sexual assault by the time they complete college. And whereas we must work together to educate our communities about what can be done to prevent sexual assault and how to support survivors. And whereas staff and volunteers of Women's Resource and Rape Assistance Program encourage every person to speak out when witnessing acts of violence, however small. And whereas with leadership, dedication, encouragement, there is compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing sexual violence in the city of Jackson, the county of Madison through prevention, education, increased awareness, and holding perpetrators who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions. And whereas the city of Jackson, county of Madison strongly support the efforts of the national, state, and local partners and of every citizens to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Now therefore, we, Jerry Gist, Mayor of the city of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2012, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and urge our citizens to join Ralph in all support service programs in belief that community members must be part of the solution to end sexual violence. Mark, we always appreciate you for everything you do. Thank you.
(applause) Thank you, Mayor, Councilman, and to Mayor Harris as well. It is once again that we have to even recognize this. We know that sexual violence is a crime that goes underreported so much and unreported because of the personal aspect of it. But we also know that there is evidence that if we can do true prevention, true prevention, which is not intervention, but that's reaching children and teaching them what this issue is before they get to an age where they possibly could engage in it or possibly perpetrate it themselves, that we can make a difference. It's going to take years, of course, because we've got perpetrators that are out there now, but it's something that can be done, and we want to be a part of that effort to end, at least reduce, sexual violence in Jackson and in all the 14 counties that we serve in Tennessee and in our country. Thank you very much. (applause)
Okay, our next proclamation is Equal Pay Day. Let me invite all the ones here that would like to come up for the reading of this proclamation, come up and join us. We have several.
(inaudible)
Good. You get to stay up here.
(inaudible)
Y'all come on up. We have another one too. Y'all come on around. Thank y'all for being here. Okay, this is a proclamation. Whereas forty-eight years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act entitled "Seven," the Civil Rights Act, women and people of color continue to suffer the consequences of unequal pay differentials. And whereas according to statistics released in 2010 by the U.S. Census Bureau, year-round full-time working women in 2010 earned only seventy-seven point four percent of the earnings of year-round full-time working men, indicating little change or progress in pay equity. And whereas according to a September 2002 report released by the General Accounting Office, women managers in seven of ten industries surveyed actually lost ground in closing the wage gap between 1995 and 2000. And whereas according to analysis of data and over three hundred classifications provided by the U.S. Department of Labor Statistics in 2001, women earn less in every occupational classification for which enough data is available, including occupations dominated by women, example cashiers, retail sales, registered nurses, and teachers. And whereas higher education is not free from wage discrimination according to the U.S. Department of Education analysis, reporting that after controlling for rank, age, credentials, field of study, and other factors, full-time female faculty members earn nearly nine percent less than their male counterparts. Whereas over a working lifetime, this wage disparity costs the average American woman and her family an estimated $523,000 in lost wages, impacting Social Security benefits and pensions. And whereas fair pay equity policies can be implemented simply and without undue cost or hardship in both the public and private sectors. Whereas fair pay strengthens the security of families today and eases future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy. Whereas Tuesday, April the 12th, symbolizes the time in the next year in which the wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid to men from the previous year. Now therefore, we, Jerry Gist, Mayor of the city of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 3rd, 2012, as Equal Pay Day in Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, and urge all citizens to recognize the full value of women's skills and significant contributions to the labor force, and further encourages businesses to conduct an internal pay evaluation to ensure women are being paid fairly. So it's my honor to present this to you all, and thank you for being here. Mayor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Gist, and thank you for conducting an equal pay audit of city and county government in the recent past. I suggest to the council and to the public that equal pay is not only the right thing to do, that it's good for business, that if you pay employees what they're worth rather than some other criteria, that they're more productive, and that's good for the bottom line. I also suggest that paying someone what they're worth enhances Social Security earned benefits, which eases the burden on government as we reach retirement years. To remind you of that, our president-elect, Jan Bynum, will hand you a card about equal pay. Thank you, Jan.
Thank you, Jan. Thank you all for being here. (applause) Item eight is second readings, and we have none. So we'll go straight to item nine, new business. We have a progress report from the Youth Gang Prevention Task Force, and we have a number of people who served on that task force here. And Dr. Lake, anyone that you want to send up to make that progress report, feel free to come up. And I really do appreciate everyone answering the subpoena to come to City Hall to participate in this effort. Some of the greatest people working with youth got around the table and worked very, very, very hard in putting this together. So with that, Dr. Lake, do you want to come up and?
Thank you, Mayor.
Ma'am.
Thank you, council, for allowing us to come today and talk with you for just a second. Did all of you get our progress report that we sent? Do I have a copy of that? Okay. I want to thank Mayor Gist for pulling us together and allowing us to serve. You have a list of all the members on that inside page of people that served on our committee. I want to single out Councilman Conger, Councilman Dodd, and Judge Kristy Little, who gave of their time graciously to walk us through all these steps and participate fully in the process. I'm going to briefly give an overview of what we did, and then I'm going to ask Amy Jones, Director of Juvenile Court Services, to talk just a minute about some eligibility requirements for one of the employment program and the enhancement program. And then I'm going to have Kathy Roberts at the end of the table, who is with WIA, Work Force Investment Area, talk about the programs themselves. And then we're going to conclude with Tony Black to my left, who will talk about the neighborhood aspect of it, and then we'll be all available for questions. So I'm just going to give a brief overview. In January of this year, we had our initial meeting of the full task force. At that time, we looked at data, and we spent quite a bit of time, about an hour and a half brainstorming. And at the conclusion of that meeting, there was a consensus reached by the group that we needed to really look at two issues relating to youth and youth gangs and youth crime in our community. One was opportunities for youth employment and enrichment, and the second was activities in neighborhoods. We divided up into two subcommittees. Members could sit on either subcommittee or both, and those subcommittees met rather aggressively with a timetable through January and February. And in the progress report you have, it details all the meetings that we had. In March, the full task force got back together the first of March and approved the recommendations that you have before you today. The first set of recommendations deal with employment opportunities for youth between fifteen and eighteen, and enrichment activities for the youth between twelve and fifteen. Note, we have an overlap year because of, we felt that some fifteen-year-olds may not be mature enough for work, but we did not want to exclude them. And then the second deal with neighborhood issues. And what we heard in that group was that while we have very good centralized after-school and summer programs, a lot of youth cannot get to these programs because of transportation issues, and that possibly we needed to look at another mode of operation of after-school programs, taking the programs to the neighborhoods instead. So I'm going to stop there, and we'll be available, all of us, for question and answers. But I'd like Amy Jones, who's Director of Juvenile Court Services, to talk a little bit about the youth that are going to be eligible for the employment and the enrichment.
Good morning, Councilman. I appreciate y'all giving us the time to talk about this this morning, and I enjoyed very much being part of this task force. Juvenile Court Services as well is excited about this project. It helps us with one of our most difficult times of the year, times of the year, which is the summer, when young people are not in school, parents have to work. If they can't afford a solid summer care program, this is when we see a lot of our kids get into trouble. Too much time on their hands, not enough creative things to do. At the same time, what we know about the kids that we work with, and we see, Juvenile Court Services sees about a thousand children a year. And what we know about these young people is a lot of times, they don't know that there are other options out there. When they start headed down the wrong road that involves drugs, or crime, or gangs, or whatever, they don't always know that there are other options for them. So we feel like this is a project that would address both sides of that. The youth in the project would be from twelve to eighteen years old. We left eighteen in in case a young person is seventeen when they commit an offense, therefore under the purview of the juvenile court, but turns eighteen at a later date. We didn't want them to have to be eliminated just because they turned eighteen. And they, we will select the youth based on the criteria that are in your packet: two or more sustained felonies, history of two or more adjudicated offenses, suspected gang affiliation, witness to a crime of violence, or having an immediate member or close affiliate who's a victim of violent crime. A child doesn't have to meet all of those, just one of those. We will commit one of our juvenile probation officers to work through the summer with the younger group to assist with the teaching and the monitoring of that. We will assist with transportation. If we have young people who have issues getting to where they need to go, whether it's the younger group or the older group, we'll assist with that. And the other thing, the other positive about doing this through juvenile court is that because they are already under a court order to participate in their program, then my officers have some enforcement power with those young people to make sure that they do what they need to do. So that's our part of this, and we're willing to commit to that, and we hope you will consider this request today.
Good morning. I'm Kathy Roberts, and I'm representing the Workforce Investment Act today. I too appreciate the opportunity in sharing this information with you and being a part of this task force. And what I want to do is give you the program details on two of the proposed programs for the summer youth to address the prevention of gang activity through youth employment and through preparation. The first program has been designed to serve twenty-five, fifteen-to-eighteen-year-olds, and will provide an enriching and constructive program through subsidized work experience. The Summer Work Experience Program is comprised of three major components, and will make an eight-week program, beginning June 4th and continuing through July 27th. The first component is education. Participants will participate in a five-day classroom setting, which will be conducted by WIA's youth team leader. This part of the program will be held from eight to three, and will take place at the West Tennessee Career Center located on Carriage House. Breakfast and lunch will be provided for the youth by Southwest Human Resource Agency's Community Outreach Summer Food Program. Participants will receive a three-dollar stipend during this time while they participate in the learning classroom. Topics will include, but of course are not limited to, soft skills, conflict resolution, team building, and corporate culture. The second component of this program is employment. Participants will work seven weeks in an on-the-job training experience. They will receive seven dollars and twenty-five cents for thirty hours of work a week. Payments will be administered through the Southwest Human Resource Agency. Employers of public and private sector, as well as governmental agencies and nonprofit organizations, will receive a one-on-one training and support through the WIA office and provided staff. The youth team leader will monitor and be a resource for the employers throughout the program. The third component, and I think probably the most important component, is case management, provided by the WIA's youth team leader and juvenile court staff. The case management will be conducted through counseling, monitoring, career exploration, and through at least one week, one-on-one mentoring between the participants and the youth team leader. Through case management, barriers that these youth face regarding continued education and maintaining stable employment will be addressed. The Summer Work Experience Program will begin with a kickoff hosted by Mayor Gist and Mayor Harris for the employers, and will end with a recognition reception hosted by Judge Kristy Little for participants, employers, and their parents. The second program is targeting the twelve-to-fifteen-year-olds. This is the summer comprehensive learning experience. It will be a four-week program that will meet from July 1st to July 27th, from 8:30 to 2:30, at the McWhorter Center at Jackson State Community College. Again, this program will focus on three major components, the first being occupational exploration. Participants will learn the awareness of the steps required for them to reach their future goals. In order to achieve this, career exploration assessments will be delivered, and occupational presenters will share experience in relation to these careers. Occupational presenters will be recruited from the employers in Jackson and Madison County. Presenters will not only discuss their career fields, but will also make presentations in the areas of computer training, work ethics, and soft skills. The second component for these twelve-to-fifteen-year-olds will be education. Again, through assessments and tutoring, participants will gain enhanced academic performance. Once a student is assessed, an individual education plan will be developed and administered for at least two hours a day in the areas of math and reading. A post-test will be used to demonstrate the success of each participant. And the third and final component is self-awareness. A heightened sense of self-awareness will be delivered through self-evaluation and guest speakers. Youth will participate in fun activities to recognize their individual strengths. Guest speakers, field trips, crafts, and other activities will introduce and address topics such as communication skills, alcohol and drug prevention, volunteerism, personal etiquette, and domestic violence. Breakfast and lunch will again be provided by Southwest Human Resource Agency. Transportation will be provided by juvenile court, and the program will conclude with a formal banquet and a fifty-dollar incentive. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm here to speak to you about the Neighborhood Action Committee recommendations. Basically, what this group looked at was that fact that many of our youngsters are unable to attend established centralized after-school and summer programs throughout the city due to lack of transportation. And we felt that more programming needed to be done in facilities such as schools, churches, and community centers that are located in the neighborhoods without any services. So the task force is recommending that the after-school and summer programs target these ages. We want to target school-aged youth with separate programs for youth of twelve and under, and thirteen through seventeen. In my experience, one of the easier groups to work with are the twelve and under, and the difficulty that we have in programming is the critical age group of thirteen to seventeen, and that's going to be a focus. The task force didn't go about creating something new. We looked at some established programs, and we looked at two model programs that have been very successful in Jackson. One is Operation Hope Neighborhood Ministries, which has handled the 800th Block of Old Hickory for many years, and they have established a great rapport with the communities in that area. And also, Area Relief Ministry has a new program called the Hub Club, and they've worked closely with Jackson's Neighborhood Services, and they have really revitalized the Hillcrest Circle area with some outstanding program over there. So we looked at those two organizations and the things that they've done, and wanted to expand that. So the task force is recommending about eight areas for programming. We looked at having program close to home in the neighborhood, team leadership, training, and responsibility. Number three, spiritual development, we felt that's a very important component that needs to be placed in here. A foster sense of achievement and accomplishment, parental involvement, which is critical, and commitment through volunteering. We want to deal with, address the issues of absentee fathers, structured sports and athletic activities, and we also want to include field trips. What we looked at, when we determined the areas that we wanted to look at, we looked at the original Safe Neighborhood Task Force 2007 report, and there were about ten neighborhoods that were identified. We wanted to begin this program in a smaller wheel, so we looked at three neighborhoods. And these are the three areas that the committee came up with. Lincoln Courts, Hayes Avenue area, Hollywood Drive area to West Forest Avenue, the East Chester Corridor, which would be Holland, Griffin, Cartmail, Ray Street, Peabody, Allard Street, James Street, all of that whole area. We looked at doing that area. The funding for this, we felt that if it's going to be something that's going to be successful, that someone needed to be hired to specifically coordinate this. So the task force has recommended funding, being sought to employ a part-time coordinator to work with these neighborhoods to develop programming. A grant has been submitted to the state of Tennessee, and Dr. Lake probably can address the timeframe on that. Also, a grant has been submitted to the Walmart Foundation to fund after-school and summer programming in the Hollywood Drive and East Chester Street neighborhoods. So that process has began, and so those are the things that we recommend take place. (inaudible) (inaudible)
This is, again, a progress report. It's a starting point. I want to say the committee did, the task force met yesterday, and we have, want to address other youth. You know, this youth employment program and enrichment program is really designed for youth who have had contact with the juvenile court system, rather serious contact. But what about all those other youth that are out there? So we met yesterday and are working with the chamber to possibly have a job fair for youth. You know, there are job fairs, but primarily for adults. But why don't we bring a lot of the employers who primarily hire youth, even in the summer and full-time, year-round, to the table with youth to have a job fair where we can hook them and be a conduit for employers and youth to get together where youth can apply right there for their jobs? So that's something that this task force continues to meet, and that's what we're working on right now. So we're recommending, on the neighborhood side, we have applied for two grants to get that side going. We hope to find out about the halftime position in June, and we hope to find out in July about the Walmart Foundation. On the employment side and enrichment for the young people, you have a budget there for the cost of that. And Mayor, did you want to address that funding for the employment side, or do you want me to?
Why don't you go ahead and address it?
Okay. We have a seventy, seventy-five thousand dollar Community Development Block grant funding that we hope to have available for this initial program. We are requesting twenty thousand additional dollars from city council, from the city, and we are requesting twenty thousand dollars from Madison County. We went to the Finance Committee for the County Commission last month. They took our recommendation and our request under advisement. They have asked us to come back to the Finance Committee this month, and it will go before the full county commission on April 16th. So that's where we are with our funding.
I know council may have some questions of the group at the table. Before I do that, let me ask any member, the members that served on that task force, would you please stand and just be recognized? Appreciate all of you being here. Y'all go ahead and stand up. Thank you all very much for what you did. (applause) Okay, questions from council? Anyone?
I have a question as well. I'll yield to Randy.
Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman.
In the meetings that y'all held, were there any discussions about parental education? Or do y'all just strictly, I mean, a lot of times, I feel like it's the, the kids don't have the education at the home, or the, did y'all discuss that at all?
That's already included in all of our juvenile court programs, parenting classes, parenting sessions, designed specifically for whatever situation that child is in. So because these kids are already involved in juvenile court, they will already be getting that parenting part.
Okay, okay.
And within the neighborhood component, that is a critical component of involving the parents when we go into the areas to do the program. For example, in talking with the people that handle the 800th Old Hickory, that's one of the strong suits of them. They are very familiar with the neighborhoods, they're very familiar with the families. When they have outings and gatherings, one of the requirements is that parents are involved, so it's addressed.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes, first I'd like to commend the mayor-
When they have outings and gatherings, one of the requirements is that parents are involved, so it's addressed.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes, first, I'd like to commend the mayor on his leadership in forming the task force, and commend Dr. Lake and others who worked, and I know his hard work. We appreciate what you're doing. Dr. Lake, you touched a bit upon my concern relative to us concentrating only on children who are, you know, in the system. It gives the impression that all our children are in the system, and that's untrue. I'm interested to know exactly how many children will be a part of, of the training program that Amy spoke of.
To be honest with you, I could, you know, I have easily a list of 100-plus children that qualify. I believe we budgeted for...
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five for each, the older and the younger.
And is that two programs of 25 each?
Yes.
Okay, so we're talking about 50 children in all?
And if we, if we are successful with the additional 20,000 from the city and 20,000 from the county, we'll be able to do eight to 10 more each, so we'll be able to do 20 additional.
Okay, so up to, up to 60, possibly?
Yes, sir.
I'm interested to know that, about how many children are we talking about in total in, in that age group? I'm not, not talking about the ones that are in the juvenile system, but I, just total in the city of Jackson. Does anyone have any, just a round figure?
I believe 17% of our population is about that.
And I think the last WIA program, we handled about, what, 400 kids, was it?
Participants.
Four hundred participants.
So my point is, I think we're missing a lot of kids.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay. But again, I appreciate you addressing that, and I look forward to seeing what the task force comes back to us with, and would be very supportive of programs that would, would also target children who aren't, not in trouble, but may have financial difficulties or transportation difficulties, but still need these, very much-needed services.
I know, I don't know if they, maybe can address it, someone from WIA. I know they have applied for, there are some federal grant money that has been made available for youth employment. I read it in the paper yesterday.
I'll defer to Jimmy Bell.
And so...
He's the director of WIA.
Put him on the hot spot.
Well...
We, we are making preparations to use some of our formula funds for our youth program in all of our eight counties. It's, it's going to be a work experience program, a six-week work experience program in addition to...
This as well, okay.
And we're trying to make that equitable, you know, in all our eight counties. That's about all the funding that we have available for that this year, but we're, we're working on our budgets for next summer, and we've also got that in budget for next year also.
Thank you very much, sir.
Jimmy, how many, how many kids total would you expect to be in that program this summer through, through the WIA?
This summer, 100.
Okay, and obviously, some of those youth will be from Jackson that will be in your program specifically. Okay, all right.
Again, thank you very much. I'm very encouraged with the work that you've done. Appreciate it.
I've got a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Councilman.
First of all, those children that are not in the system, as Councilman Brooks was talking about, how do you go about selecting those for the program?
Well, the...
Do you work through the schools?
Is that from the WIA side, what, what Mr. Bell was just speaking about?
Well, that's one of the things, yes.
Oh, can you just... There are a list of guidelines that students are, but they are referred just from anyone, I mean, you can refer your own child, you just have to call the WIA office and then meet the WIA standards.
Do the schools get this information?
Yes, they do.
They do, okay. And then the other question on the job fair that you have planned, now that would be for children of what ages, again, was...
Well, it'd probably be 16, and we were interested in going to 21, age 21.
Because I know in the past, in working with things like this, we always had a problem getting employers to hire 16-year-olds because of so many of the insurance problems.
Correct. Their, their, their opportunities are limited, but we don't want to exclude them from the process.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Councilman Ross, yeah?
On the funding from the community development block grant, is that something that we'll be able to continue on into future years, or is that a one-time? Is, is that funded, will that be available?
That's going to be the next item on the agenda to, to have Council to approve that substantial amendment to the City GB, and that, that question may be...
Okay, I'll hold my question down.
Yeah, referred to Dave.
The other question I had was, was on some of the criteria you were mentioning, like they've got to have two contacts at juvenile court services before they're committed to the program. There's any wiggle room in that, where you've got a, got a kid that you know could be helped, but doesn't meet all the criteria?
Well, I think every child who comes to juvenile court will meet one of those five. I don't think there's the, I can't think of a child that I've ever seen who doesn't meet at least one of those.
Okay.
Because they don't have to meet them all.
They just have to meet one.
Right, they don't have to meet one.
As far as the funding process, again, next item on the agenda is through, through the City GB. Dave will present that to Council. Al, let me ask this question. I think we talked about, as far as the city's commitment or potential commitment of 20,000, will that be in next year's budget? Is that, is that how that's proposed to be paid, be involved in the, in the budget or before?
Well, I don't know the timing, but Dr. Lake's speaking of the, how you're talking about their next commission.
Yes.
So if they approve it, I would think we would have to put it in.
So it'll be, so it'll be in this year's, okay, in June, probably? Okay, all right, very good. Okay, any other questions of our, of our task force? If not, thank you all very much for your hard work. Item two under New Business is consideration of resolution approving a substantial amendment, number one, to the annual action plan of 2010, 2011. And Dave Ross is here to lay that out for Council.
Good morning.
Morning, Dave.
Morning, Dave.
The substantial amendment is to reprogram dollars that we have had from previous-year projects that have not either gone forward or have come under budget, and it's a real complicated kind of formula to figure out. We look at our letter of credit with the program, and then we look at all our active projects, and that gives me an idea about how much we actually have to reprogram. And we've dwindled that down over the years. This year, we have found approximately $175,000 for this program, and $50,000, which will come forward before you next month, for the annual action plan for the minor emergency repair program. In answer to your question, Councilman, future is kind of up in the air because we have taken substantial cuts in the CDVG program the last three years, and I anticipate more because Congress is not really willing to fund the CDVG program at levels from previous years. In addition, the home program, which is the major thrust for our housing rehabilitation program, as well as using CDVG for minor emergency repair program, was cut, home program was cut 38% this year. And so I'm not sure what the future holds for that. If you want to continue funding this program, something else is going to have to be cut, primarily it would be not the home program funds, but CDVG. And the only place to really cut would be the minor emergency repair program, which really assists our elderly with, and disabled persons with making minor emergency repairs just to get the house livable. You know, we get a lot of heating and cooling problems, and, and leaky roofs and things such as that, that they cannot afford to repair, so...
How much is in that program?
The minor emergency repair program. I'm sorry, I've got spring, whatever.
How much is, that, what's the dollar amount of that program currently?
I tried to put about $50,000.
Okay, so not a whole lot where they're...
It's not a whole lot. We've been averaging anywhere from 30 to 40 houses. If I cut it back a lot, you begin to wonder if it's even worth the effort, so that is, that is a concern. In addition, we are also paying the 108 loan, and each year that increases with the interest and, and the principal payments on the 108 loan, which was approved last year, or two years ago. So that's, that's the, more or less, the status of the CDVG program.
Jackson is an entitlement community for City GB, and it has, for the past three years, at least three years, been, been cut each year, and I guess we can refer to that as the trickle-down effect. They've been, and I think we probably expect to continue to see that come out of, come out of Congress. Any other, any other questions? You do have a resolution, and this does relate back to the previous presentation of...
I guess my other question on the, on the funding, really would be to Dr. Lake, I guess, if we approve this for the current year, funding for it, and then the funding's not available for next year, I mean, is there, this is a one-year program that we're approving currently, and then we just find the funding for it somewhere different next year, but if we couldn't?
Yeah, we'll look for grants. We'll be very aggressive with the grant opportunities that we'll look for, just like you are on the neighborhood side. If grants come up that address the issues we've identified, we'll be very aggressive in applying for them to maximize our resources. But we're asking, at the end of the year, we'll evaluate this, see how it works, what needs to get better, and we plan to come back and tell you, how did we do?
My, my question was, I've got a concern with the city approving a grant this year that's a one-year grant, but the program's going to continue forever, but we've got to come up with some other kind of funding for it, and that's not going to be the situation we're talking about here. Okay, thank you, David.
Very quickly, Mayor, that raised a quick question, Dr. Lake, that I had, and I forgot it. What, what are the evaluation measures that will be used to test whether or not the program is successful?
Our part two of court services will monitor recidivism, which is basically just repeat offending of the young people who come through our program. We will evaluate them at six, 12, 18, and 24 months past their completion of the program, and then we can compare them to the control, control group of young people who did not go through the program, and we should be able to see significant differences in reoffending of this population.
And that'll be hugely difficult to do if, if we're not funded the next year and the year after that as well.
Well, this group of, what I'm saying is, the group of children that go through this summer, we can monitor them going into the future, and, I mean, we'll easily, by the end of the year, have six months, we'll be six months out from their program completion.
Okay.
We'll, we'll also make it the, on how they did at their job tests, and then at Jackson State for the younger youth, they will get assessments through that program.
Okay, and that'll be made available to us?
We'll be making all that available.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Lake, when you said that, you know, you would be evaluating everything to see whether or not the city would need to chip in next year, so when you are writing that part of the grant, asking how you're going to sustain it, will we be listed at all as one of those entities?
You won't be listed unless you tell me I can list you.
Okay, but I mean, when, when you're renewing it after this year?
Yes, I would not do that.
Okay, I did not think you would do that. But I just wanted everybody else to hear that.
Okay, any other questions from Council on this resolution? If not, is there a motion for approval?
Some.
A motion, a second, and discussion. Council, please, bud.
The votes unanimous.
Thank you, Dave. Item three under New Business is presentation to Jackson Arts Council. Kathy Leatherwood, Director, and she may have some of her board members here. I know we have pretty good entourage of people that supports the Arts Council. If you wouldn't mind, just stand up and let us recognize you all. Thank you for being here.
Mayor and Council, good morning.
Morning.
We'd also like to thank you for taking a few minutes and allowing us to give you our annual update on the arts in our community. My name is Gary Grisham. I'm President of the Jackson Arts Council, and I'm joined today by our executive director, now going on her 12th year, Kathy Leatherwood. But we are here today for two primary reasons. One is to thank you for your investment in the arts, and two, to honor our obligation to you to be held accountable for your investment. Ms. Kathy.
I'm so glad to see so many friendly faces up here, and know that y'all understand how important the arts are to this city. This makes my job very, not easy, but it makes it a lot more delightful to be able to work with people who understand the importance of the arts. Some of the things that we did the past year, that we were cultural partners for 17 arts projects. We worked with the Coral Society, the Jackson Theater Guild, Ballet Arts, the Symphony, the NED, and we brought art classes to at-risk children at the Boys and Girls Club in the library, and art therapy to children with autism at the Star Center. We strongly believe in educational programming, and that included grants, workshops, education for arts organization board members, collaborating with the Chamber of Commerce for educational workshops, and information to the public about arts and events. We collaborate with Jackson Downtown Development, recognizing that there was a need to inform the community about the arts venues, events, and parking availability downtown. We work with the media, the surrounding chambers of commerce in the different communities, their newspapers, to promote arts, art events in Jackson, bringing dollars into our community. Jackson is such a wonderful city, and we have had our challenges lately, but the arts give us the opportunity to uplift, and so now, more than ever, we need the arts. Jacksonians love the arts, and I think as long as we keep on strengthening the infrastructure so we can bring more arts to people for the access to those arts.
You know, about 30 days ago, we had an arts leadership breakfast that was attended by 40 or 50 arts patrons in our community. Some of you were at that arts breakfast, and some information was shared based on why we do what we do. And I'd like to just touch some of the high points of that, but they center along two ideas, the economic development part of the arts in our community and across our state, and also the impact that the arts can have on our children. And perhaps it's providential that we're here today on the same day that Dr. Lake makes her presentation about the youth gang prevention. Ernest, you were at Clarence Boone's Jewel Awards a couple of weeks ago, and the entertainment that was conducted there was the, a group from the Stacks Academy over in Memphis. But youth that were standing up there entertaining us had been through some kind of education in the arts, playing musical instruments, and the thought that hit me is, why can't we duplicate that here in, in Jackson? So those 60 kids or so that we were talking that needed something to do during the summer, let's give them an instrument to play, and let's have our own Stacks Academy here. But on the economic development side, let me just share some information with you. Tennessee ranks the highest in the southern region, which includes Alabama, Florida, Georgia, Kentucky, Louisiana, Mississippi, North Carolina, and South Carolina in per capita establishments, per capita employment, per capita wages, and per capita revenue for the performing arts. Tennessee's creative industries represent 6.1% of all industry establishments in the state. They employ 134,500 people, which is 4.8% of all employment in the state. There are 7,941 creative industry establishments in Tennessee. As an industry, this represents the fourth-largest in the state, greater than information technology, telecommunications, transportation, logistics, defense, security, forest, and wood products manufacturing, and advanced materials. The creative industries represent the eighth-largest industry cluster in Tennessee. So the facts are stubborn when it comes to what the arts mean to economic development. I, I think this data points that out. But more than anything else, back to how it affects our children, I, I do think the arts changes lives. The Jackson Arts Council, our primary mission is to connect and strengthen the arts, and the arts connect people. And I think more than anything else, other than actually the gospel, the arts crosses more lines in our community. You make it possible. Your, your money that you invest in the arts makes that possible. Thank you for what you do, more so than the dollars. Just your encouragement to us means an awful lot, so we thank you this morning.
Thank you all. Any questions from Council as far as the Arts Council? If not, yes, thank you all. Thank you all for being here this morning. Thank you all for being here this morning. Hey, item four, under New Business, Consideration and Recommendation by Nonprofit Review Committee Regarding the Funding of Nonprofit Organizations.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, council. First, I'd like to thank Councilman Harvey Buchanan for his leadership and vision in forming this committee. I'd like to thank Anita Brooks, Sam Dawson, and Alifun for their support. And I would be remiss if I did not thank Charles Pepper Bray and Randy Wallace for their hard work and dedication on this committee. We have set a precedent for openness and transparency in the process of funding nonprofits. We did not take the path of least resistance and simply fund the same nonprofits as we always have. We open the process to all nonprofits in the City of Jackson. Twenty-one nonprofits responded, not including those that are currently jointly funded between the city and the county. We implemented an objective process that allowed us to evaluate the services provided, the number of Jacksonians served, and the percent of funding spent in direct service to clients. Entities also completed a questionnaire that answered where they received funding, are they jointly funding, and whether they have ongoing fundraising programs. Entities were also asked to submit their 990 IRS form. After careful evaluation of these documents, we held personal interviews with sixteen nonprofits. The committee met four times over the course of about a month and a half. Though some may not agree with our recommendations, we all can agree that an open, transparent process is good for the City of Jackson. We recommend the following. A 10% across-the-board reduction of FY 2012 funding levels of all nonprofit organizations, and the funding of three new nonprofit organizations at the following level. The Regional Interfaith Association, RIFA, and we all know what they do, at $20,000. The Faith Health Center, which provides health care to the poor and uninsured for $10,000. And the Hub City Golf Association First Tee Program, which is a nationwide program for youth that teaches golf along with life skills. With that, I move that the recommendation of the nonprofit committee, I'd like to make that motion.
Do you have a motion, a second, any discussion from council?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead, council.
I have deep concerns with taking, we're not saving any money. You're actively spending $65 more than what we spent last year by adding these three agencies. And we're taking money away from some very important agencies. For instance, $8,000 from the Chamber of Commerce, which is our main source for economic development. Then you have the Star Center, the West Tennessee Health and Speech Center, Carl Perkins Prevention from Child Abuse and Sterbative Causes Association, Arts Council, Sympathy, Downtown Development. Personally, myself, I cannot see taking away from these agencies and adding. I have no problem with... Now, RIFA, I believe we gave them $400,000 this past year, didn't we not, Mayor?
The city, through Community of Development and CGB, I think maybe one of the programs, assisted them in relocation and renovation.
Faith Health Center, I'm all game for giving them money. They've been doing a valuable service here for the city and county. But I don't see taking away from these other sources there. If we got the money to add agencies, then we need to discuss it and put it on. But right now, I think we should keep the present budget from last year on these agencies that we've been funding.
Okay, any other comments or...
I would just like to reiterate Councilman Cisco's concerns in regards to the funding amounts and the importance of primarily the Chamber of Commerce.
I think it is the intent of the staff and the budget, people putting together next year's budget. Obviously, right now, unless miracles occur overnight, that we're looking at roughly a three and a half percent decrease in the operating budget. It has nothing to do with capital, operating budget compared to what we have now versus our proposed budget. So, I would certainly ask the council, regardless of how it's funded, who gets the funding, that we not only, if we're going to reduce our departmental budgets by three and a half percent, that we reduce all of our agencies by an equal amount in order to go across the board. So, anyway, that will be proposing budget, and council can evaluate that at that time. Any other, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
In response to the committee a little bit, there was not a single agency that came before us that was not deserving of the funds. The city, just like any other entity, has had cuts from, you know, some of our grants have been cut from federal government. We're limited our budget for the following fiscal year, which is what these numbers cover. We're going to probably be spending about $750,000 more than we're taking in. So, we're already eating into our rainy day fund considerably. And so, the committee, taking all those things into consideration, was why the committee came up with these recommendations. The 10% cut, we didn't feel like, you know, we weren't going to, you know, cut any one particular agency. We just kind of, you know, make it equitable to each one that we did want to reduce. And then the three that we wanted to add, we didn't want that to cost the city more money. That's kind of the process we went through to get where we came. I mean, I agree with Councilman Cisco and Councilman Rahm that I hate to cut some of these agencies. I would rather not have to do that. But economic reality is that, you know, we've got limited funds. We're spending more than we're taking in already. We didn't want to exacerbate that problem by adding some new agencies without trying to come up with some way with the funding to be able to do that.
Mayor?
I just don't see adding new agencies if we're short of funds. I don't see adding more agencies if the money is short. We need to keep what we got and keep supporting things that we have been supporting. These agencies need supporting.
I have a question for the committee also. Was every entity interviewed that made the application process?
No.
Is there a basis for that?
Based on the valuation that we did, the process that I described.
I believe Coste was interviewed.
They weren't. No, they weren't.
Why?
Primarily, when Judge Little came before us and asked for $750,000, or I don't remember the amount, she said she wasn't coming back. And she came back.
Well, that's entirely different agency there. You know, that's a counter.
That's fine. We decided not to fund. I mean, that was our recommendation.
Okay, all council, go ahead, council.
My question is, were these the amounts, these three agencies that you're recommending here, were those the amounts that they asked for?
No.
So, you did reduce those some from what they asked?
Substantially.
Okay. And then, my other comment is, you know, we are, you're asking us to vote for a 10% across-the-board reduction. Can we vote on that separately?
I would take up the motion as it has been presented.
So, we can't vote separately? You don't want to do that?
I would, parliamentary procedure would ask you to make a motion. I think our motion is fair.
And then, too, the 10% of the existing agencies were cut, but that 10% was used in funding three new agencies. So, really, there was no 10%.
That's great.
And increased $65.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
With respect to the 10% across-the-board reduction in agencies allocation and the adding of three new agencies, it's like pillow posts to me. And by that, I mean, why add if we're going to reduce? And that's my thought on that. With respect to the Chamber of Commerce, that entity has been cut $8,000 and added on to the three new agencies. We either do either or. If we're not going to add, if we're going to add agencies, are we going to refund those from the previous level to keep the bottom-line figure? That's up for discussion.
Also, I don't feel financially responsible to ask our agencies, like the Police Department and the Fire Department, to cut their budget by three and a half percent and us increase our donations by $65.
I'd just suggest $65 out of a $60 million budget is ridiculous.
Still not three and a half percent.
However, again, it would have been easy to take the path of least resistance. We could have had one meeting and just voted to fund the nonprofits at the same level that we have in the past, and that's what we've done every year that I've been on the City Council. And for this committee to take the bold step, to be open and transparent, and to allow new nonprofits to make application, to have an opportunity to be funded, surely should be commended. And again, there's a motion on the floor, and I'll call for the question.
Okay, there is a motion. The second question has been called for. Any additional discussion, council?
Well, I just want to say that I like the idea of the 10% across-the-board reduction for next year in all the nonprofits, because we are going to have to do that. I mean, we just cannot continue to fund all of these at the level that they wish to be funded. But I'm not for adding the new ones. That's why I wanted to take it separately.
Okay, that was my fault. The question's been called for, which restricts discussion. So, council, please vote.
Okay, the motion on the floor is...
The motion on the floor is that you have a recommendation in front of you that has received a second. So, that is the motion, is a recommendation of the nonprofit committee.
Okay, Mayor, that motion fails with six members that voted against it and three that were in favor.
Okay. Is there additional discussion on that for potential funding or...
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we fund the agencies that were funded in 2012 budget for the amount that they were given at that time.
Okay, the motion, everybody understands the motion, is the funding for this upcoming year will be the same as the funding for the previous year. Again, I want council to understand that as you receive the budget, that particular budget will be proposed to council for a three and a half percent reduction. They'll be up to council whether you approve that or not. Basic reasons for doing that is we're going to propose three and a half percent for all of our city departments and not leave anyone outside that fence. So, council will have an opportunity to prove that.
What you are expressing in reality, that the nonprofits may look at a three and a half percent reduction also.
That'll be what will present to council. Council can approve it or reject it. Yeah, yeah. Okay, was there a second to that motion?
Let me make sure I'm understanding. What's coming up in budget will be the figures from last year minus three and a half percent.
With the agencies that were funded last year, minus three and a half percent as we're asking all the departments to do.
So, we're amending that motion to reflect that?
That is the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second.
Repeat the motion, please. Just repeat it for us.
Councilman, you want to repeat the motion, or you want me to try to...
Yeah.
I'm making the motion that we use the budget for 2012 of the nonprofits that we supported then at that amount, and at the budget, there will be a budget percentage where there is a three and a half percent...
Reduction.
Reduction. And that will be voted on the council at the time of the budget, of the 2013 budget.
Okay, anyone have any questions about the motion?
So, we're voting the same amount we funded last year, less three and a half percent.
That's exactly right.
Well, if it's going to be presented to us when the budget comes up, yeah. You'll decide whether you want to do the three and a half or not.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I think where the confusion lies is that you told us what we're going to do in the future with the half, the three and a half percent.
That's not...
And we're not taking that up right now.
Your motion is to fund the agencies as they're funded this year for next year.
Right.
Did that nail it?
That's it.
Okay, all right.
Question.
And is there a second? Do we have a second?
Yes, we do.
Okay, any discussion?
I would just suggest that it begs the question of having a nonprofit review committee if we're going to just fund it the same way, but...
Well, council voted to do that, so that's why we have one.
And with respect to what you're saying, with regard to three and a half percent, that would be taken up during budget.
Exactly right, exactly. Okay, any additional comments or questions from council? We have a motion and probably a second. Council, please vote.
And that motion passed with five in favor and four against.
Okay, item five, under New Business, Board Appointments, recommending the reappointment of Estella Davis on JTA Board. Is there a motion?
Some move.
A motion, a second. Discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote, and a abstaining.
Yeah.
That motion passed with eight members in favor and one abstaining.
Final item is Consideration of Invoices Over $10,000.
Some move.
Have a motion, second. Discussion, council, please vote.
We vote unanimously.
There being no further business, meeting is adjourned.